... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilman Straney?
President.
Councilwoman Rossetti?
President.
Councilwoman Riley?
President.
Councilwoman Friedman?
President.
Councilman Burns?
President.
Councilman Strong?
President.
President Scammler?
President.
That's all seven here.
Welcome, Mayor. Whenever you're ready.
Sure, so, uh, so thanks very much, Mr. President, for, um, having me at the top of the agenda. Really, the, the purpose of me coming down was to, if needed, go through the, go through and elaborate on the news release that was sent out today. I trust that all of you have seen the news release, have read it, and we can talk about what's in it, and we can also talk about, uh, public meetings, including this one, moving forward, if we want to talk about the venue and recordings and, you know, things of that n- that nature. But I, I g- I guess I should start by, you know, one of the things I said at the, at the news conference today was that, how rapidly evolving this was. And as I was announcing something this morning, uh, towards the end of it, the governor was announcing changes to something that he had just announced the day before. I mean, that is how quickly and how rapidly, um, you know, things are evolving. Uh, the last, you know, one of the last lines of the news release is about how, um, we are going to follow the C E, the CDC's recommendation about, um, you know, postponing or canceling events that have more than, than fifty people. Now, since that time, which is maybe eight hours ago, the CDC has now come out with another recommendation, lowering that amount to ten people. So that i- that is the new number that is out. So technically, there's, you know, more than ten people that are, that are in this room right now. That, so that is how quickly, uh, these things are, uh, changing. So, um, I guess, I mean, really, just some of the highlights, the, all the facts and information is, uh, is in the news release. But, um, as you know, starting tomorrow, we're, we're limiting, uh, public access to City Hall. Um, there's been an update with regards to the, the court system, which originally was, uh, on the fifth floor, which was originally scaling down their operations, has now, uh, said that they're going to consolidate all of their operations in the county building, the Harvey Justice County Building. So, uh, starting tomorrow, there will not be any, uh, court, uh, employees on the fifth floor at City Hall. And, um, I suppose with the exception, they're saying that employees may, uh, want to come use their offices from time to time to access records or resources, but that, uh, from a public standpoint, that, uh, no members of the public will be accessing the fifth floor of Binghamton City Hall for any sort of court, uh, court appointments or, or business before the court. That it's, uh, arraignments and other things are being consolidated, uh, with the county. So, uh, that was brought to my attention, um, with, really, just within the last few hours. So that, that also does change, um, not necessarily, I g- I guess, change, but make what we were, make our plan a little bit easier to implement, because, uh, obviously, we don't have jurisdiction over the courts. The courts, um, provide security presence on the first floor, and you, you have people coming through the building to go to the fifth floor. Um, the court is one of the primary reasons that a large population comes to City Hall. So the main reasons people come are to go to court, to pay their water, sewer, or parking bill, to access the city clerk's office for a variety of, of permits and other things, and a whole host of other activities. So, uh, the fact that, um, it is, fifth floor is now closed to public means that we can further work to contain, uh, and limit the building to, to public access. All of the examples, you know, have been outlined in the news release. I'll be the first to say that I'm sure that there are some scenarios that we have not thought of, which is why we said, um, call, email, you know, contact us, and we will evaluate the requests on a, on a case-by-case basis, right? The employees, uh, are all, you know, we're not closing City Hall, the employees are here. So, uh, we encourage you to, you know, call, email, um, we're not eliminating any ser- services. Uh, but I will also say that since my news conference this morning, uh, the Governor's Office has sent out some, uh, I'll, I'll call it now, uh, requests or suggestions, but usually those requests or suggestions in a very short period of time turn into future executive orders by the Governor's Office. And they're now basically asking, um, uh, the, the municipalities to differentiate or delineate between essential and non-essential, uh, personnel, and shift your focus to a, a solely mission-critical, uh, aspect of, of public safety. Um, and when I, you know, we have requested clarification and further guidance on this. That's usually what happens, is we get a directive, and then we ask questions. Uh, what I was told from the Governor's representative today is that it's at the discretion of the mayor to determine who's, uh, essential and non-essential, and that's really, um, they're, they're leaving it up to us to, um, make those determinations. And what they want you to do is, is of your determined, non-essential category of employees, they'd like you to, to basically cut that, um, by approximately fifty percent. Uh, in Binghamton, um, police, fire, and public works, right off the bat, obviously are, are considered essential employees, and there are other departments outside of that a- as well. But the bulk of employees, more than half of the employees, uh, significantly more than half of the employees that work for the city of Binghamton, fall under the, uh, essential, um, essential category. Um, there are administrative offices that, if you technically want to focus solely on public safety, you know, we, we could take a look at. Um, so we are, we are going to ask for more clarification, guidance from the Governor's Office, but we are beginning to comprise a, a list if we need to follow that directive. Uh, and in addition, just because we've limited public access now, uh, we're also putting together a plan, um, if we needed to close the building and have employees work from home and have remote access, or if we were going to, um, keep some employees here and keep, um, have some employees work from home for a, a continuity, um, so that we have redundancy. If, uh, if, you know, God forbid, we had, uh, a case, you know, inside City Hall, uh, so that we had a, a, a backup, in essence, where, uh, people could, could work from home and have access to the information, and make sure that, that basic day-to-day functions like, you know, employees getting paid, you know, et cetera, uh, would happen. But, uh, just, just, I guess, from an edu- education purpose, you know, the, the, the main draw, I'd say that the, the most people come in, probably pay their, uh, parking water and sewer bill, you can, you can do that online, you can do that by mailing it in, and we, and there's a drop box on the first floor, you, to do that. So, people are still expected to pay their bills, um, you just don't need to come in and do it in person. So we provided multiple options for that. If you want to request a, a recycle bin, you can call Public Works, we'll deliver it to you instead of, uh, we'll deliver it e- to you in about a, a week or less, you don't need to come in, uh, to do that. Uh, we are, uh, suspending, uh, the terminations or the cutoff, uh, of, of water. Uh, obviously, you know, water is the primary deterrent, hot water and soap is the primary deterrent in a public health crisis, which this is. We would never, you know, shut off someone's water for, for failure to pay, you know, during a, a crisis. We don't want to encourage people to not pay their bills, but certainly, we want to, to be there, um, and, and know that, you know, in the, in the event of an economic, you know, crisis as a result of future closings, and, you know, people are going to have difficulty making ends meet, that, um, you know, they will, they will have, they will have water. And, uh, from what NICEAG is saying, NICEAG is offering a, a similar, uh, situation, because, uh, if they, if they shut off your, your utilities, um, your power, you're not necessarily going to be able to have hot water, uh, you know, either. So, um, I did declare, uh, a state of emergency, which, um, allows me to do a variety of things, uh, some of which I outlined today, some of steps they haven't taken yet, don't know if I'll take in the future, uh, but allow me to, you know, move quickly in, in the future to do so. Um, we've hired a, a firm, uh, to come in, uh, to focus specifically on touch surfaces, and those are things like door handle, and, and all of this is in the release, but I just want to elaborate on it. Uh, wipe chairs, wipe tables, uh, door handles, door jams, buttons on elevators, hand rails, basically anything in the building where the, the public would come into contact with. And even though we're limiting public access, you know, there still are people in the building, and when, you know, people go, uh, home at five o'clock, you know, they may come into contact with other people, so we're g- regardless of whether it's just open to the public or not, we still want to, uh, take a variety of steps to protect the employees, uh, and protect the public, uh, when employees, you know, leave for the building. Um, public meetings, uh, that, that's, that's applicable to public meetings as well, we are limiting, uh, public access temporarily. Um, we are, some, some of the municipalities are, uh, doing two things. One is, uh, part of the Governor's Executive Order allows, uh, for a current suspension of the, the open meetings law, so that, um, in this sort of situation, um, you guys could call in, um, uh, to a meeting remotely and legally cast a vote. Uh, that's something in the past that you, you wouldn't have necessarily been able to do. I'm sorry, Joe.
That's the Governor's?
That, the, the, as part of the Governor's Executive Order, that is an option, right? So normally, you know, a month ago, you couldn't have done that, because of the, the open, open meetings law. But there is a provision, and Lee can forward it to all of you, I mean, Jared has it upstairs, you can forward it. So it talks about, you know, the, the, the things that you are able to do in the middle of a, of a public health crisis. So one of them is, uh, if council members feel safer, uh, calling in from home or another location, or if council members have compromised immune systems or of a certain age, you know, things along those things, you have the option of doing that. Um, and then, uh, like, the, one of the models that we're looking at following is like what Syracuse is currently doing, they're limiting public access, but, um, live streaming of the meetings, so publics could watch them, uh, live in real time. Uh, Lori Clift is, is fleshing out a couple of options, uh, for us right now. Um, all, all the law currently requires us to do is make sure that we record the meetings, you know, audio or video, and make sure that they're available to the public. Um, but, you know, we're not about necessarily just doing the, the bare minimum, so we're looking at, um, options that other, other cities are doing right now. And I think what Syracuse is doing, and Syracuse is not the only city, but that's the only one I can think of off the top of my head, they, uh, they're closing it, access to the public, they're going to do live streaming, and they're going to make it available on their, on their websites as well. Obviously, we're not doing that for this meeting, um, but that's what we're working towards, I think, for your Wednesday meeting, we should be in a, in a better position, uh, to be able to do that. Um, and if we need to purchase some, uh, equipment for, for that, we'll, uh, we'll do that as well. Um, the, uh, there's several, uh, public events that have been canceled already, um, or altered, the St. Patrick's for Myler, that was this past weekend, they altered it to be in compliance with the Governor's, uh, at that time, it was, uh, no events larger than fi- five hundred at a time. They broke it up into two different heats to get under that number. The SUNY Broom Culinary opening has been canceled, the Easter egg hunt has been canceled, the McKenna Run has been canceled, the Retro Run has been rescheduled to May sixteenth, outside of the eight-week window that the Governor has outlined. And the Bridge Run, um, we are working with the Chamber right now, and they're, they're canceling the event, or the event has been canceled, and they're working on scheduling a, a new date as well. The state of emergency is in place for about two weeks, um, it will be reevaluated if needs to be extended. Then, I can tell you that, you know, in all likelihood, I plan to extend it, I just like to, um, you know, implement these things on, on a shorter timeframe, so that you can just extend them as they go along, as opposed to throwing out some net for, you know, a month, two months, three months, or beyond. I think, you know, as we've seen, um, things not only change by the day, they change by the hour. So, um, and, and quite frankly, the things I'm telling you today may change tomorrow by, um, and I expect more announcements to come from the Governor before, you know, you go to sleep tonight. Um, two things that I want to, uh, alert you to, actually, before I do that, just, you may have seen the story in the paper today about, uh, the, the press had listed twelve restaurants across the region that are, are preparing meals for kids, that are being shut down, uh, bec- that, uh, the, the schools are being shut down, meaning that there's a nee- need for more meals for kids. Uh, six of those are in the city of Binghamton, they are, um, see, I think, or actually, I'm sorry, eight of those, uh, are in the city of Binghamton, Alexander's Cafe, The Belmar Pub, Cortez Craft, The Lost Dog, Relief Pitcher, Speedy and Rib Pit, and Peterson's. Just so, uh, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, ju- just so, uh, everyone's aware of that, and, just to note, these are places that now have been shut down, uh, with the Governor, that, that are only able to do takeout only. But they've, they've been shut down, in all essence, they, you know, they, they are being shut down. Um, you are, not all, not all restaurants are able to do takeout, and, you know, the revenue generated by takeout will not be able to, uh, support a lot of these places, but still, these restaurants are stepping up to the plate, and I think that that's, that's very commendable, frankly, so I just want to make a point. I referenced it at the news conference, I want to, you know, I'll mention it to, to you folks as well. Two things that, these are, these are secondary concerns, our top concern is obviously public safety, but if you, if you just want to take that aside for a moment, uh, some long-term financial concerns that you want to pay attention to, that you should be concerned about, and that we, you will hear more about, certainly, when the budget, uh, is presented in, um, in October, is that I'm very concerned about the impact, uh, that this overall crisis is going to have on sales tax. Sales tax is the second-largest form of revenue for the city of Binghamton. In the 2020 budget, it's budgeted about twelve million dollars. Um, it's second only to the, uh, property tax, uh, collection of property taxes. Um, there's not a doubt in my mind that over the, the second quarter, sales tax revenues across the state, the county, and the city will drop significantly. I don't know what's, I don't have a number for you, obviously, but, uh, when businesses, I mean, restaurants and taverns, uh, are, are one of the largest generator of sales tax for New York State.
The number one.
The number, yes, that is what you said on that, yes. So the, the number one. Um, so, whether it's a month, three months, we're, we're going to take a hit, all right? So there's just no way around that. Um, so that's something we're going to have to deal with, uh, as part of the budget process. I am concerned also about, uh, what's happening in the stock market, the, again, the Dow dropped about three thousand points today. Um, the, you've heard me talk a lot about the New York State retirement system, contributions to the pension fund, the retirement for police, fire, and, uh, the employee retirement system. The control, the, the cutoff deadline each year that the controller uses is March thirty-first. Okay, so, now, i- i- it is based on a five-year average, right? It's not just based on a one-year average, thankfully, but, you know, we've seen the largest drops, uh, in the last week or, or so, uh, than we've seen in, uh, basically a generation. Um, there's going to be an impact, I don't know how large the impact is going to be, but, uh, our, our pension expenses, pension and healthcare are the top two largest, uh, expenses that are outside of our control and the budget. And, um, the third is, uh, the union contracts, whi- which are within our control, because we, we negotiate those. So, I, I just simply want to, to bring that to your attention, it's something that you should be mindful of, and, um, like I said, you know, Chuck Shager and Lori, uh, do an excellent job, you know, multi-year budgeting, planning year-round. Um, but this is, this is, this is probably going to be the, the largest financial obstacle or challenge that's, that's facing this administration. And, you know, historically, um, if you wanted, if you went back and looked at the numbers when Rich Bucci was mayor, and when Matt Ryan was mayor, there was a period of time stemming from nine eleven, when the stock markets collapsed and dropped significantly, where in a very short period of time, the city went from little to no annual increases to, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars an increase a year, to millions of dollars a increase a year. I'm not saying that I think that's what's going to happen, because I don't know what the impact is going to be, but if history is any indicator, in times of crisis, you see, you know, significant increases, uh, in pension. Fortunately, uh, a few years ago, we did create a reserve account specifically for spikes in pension, uh, I believe it's about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I don't know if that'll be enough, it could be more, but we did that to kind of learn, learn some lessons from the past, when there were major increases in items outside of, of our control, right? So I just wanted to pass, you know, pass that along to you. Um, and just, you know, in closing, uh, in the news conference, um, you know, I, I think we, we've been working hand-in-hand with the state of New York, I think the Governors, and the Governor and the Governor's Office has done a very good job of keeping in contact with us, and really making some very difficult, bold decisions, um, that I'm sure have, um, prevented this, well, had, had, have contained it and prevented it, uh, from growing at the rate that we've seen in Italy, and Spain, and China, and other countries. I think the federal government and the state government are, are looking at what these other countries and cities in other countries didn't do quickly enough, to make sure that that doesn't happen here. There's going to be a lot of pain locally, particularly with the closing of, of the bars and restaurants, other states are closing businesses altogether, or telling people in, in certain counties to shelter in place. So, that is probably coming our way. Um, I think it's going to get worse before it's going to get better. One thing, um, to kind of just pay attention to is, you keep hearing that there's no confirmed cases in Broom County. So, you know, just a couple of things about that. One is, we know that there's a shortage of testing, so we don't know what the accurate real numbers are, uh, the, because there are not enough people getting tested. And the state and federal government, as they have increased their testing, you're going to see, you know, more confirmed cases. The state of New York right now still co- says that there's one confirmed case in Broom County. They say it every day, um, on the conference calls I'm on, when they update where there's, uh, hits in Broom County. Um, the county executive says there's no, uh, confirmed cases in Broom County, because of the way it's recorded, that this individual is a student in Albany, um, we don't know how long that person has been in Albany, if it exceeded the time that the coronavirus, uh, you know, can, can exist within you and, and be spread. It probably does, in all likelihood, but, you know, confusion in a time of crisis is never a good thing. Uh, I believe that there's, my opinion is that there are, there are unconfirmed cases in Broom County, and that will begin to be confirmed as we see an increase in testing. And I think the Governor is doing a good job of trying to set up remote testing sites to the public, increase testing and the increase in capacity in the hospitals. They're asking counties and cities to identify buildings, uh, that are vacant, maybe, uh, dormitories that are closed, uh, as a result of, um, uh, you know, school not being in session, or, uh, school buildings, so that they can expand their capacity and do makeshift, makeshift hospitals. We will, we will cooperate, you know, fully, uh, in, in that search for those facilities, but I really just wanted to make you aware of that. So, um, this is probably more than what I said in the news conference, because some of this stuff I wasn't aware of, at ten-thirty this morning, that I became more aware of it, you know, over the course, course of the day. But, um, I, oh, and then, one thing I'll, I'll just add to, is we do have an FAQ sheet, it's on the website right now, um, you know, how do you get your recycle bin, how do you pay your bill, how do you pay a ticket, you know, all the, that people want to know, how do I go about doing these things, we've set up an FAQ. So if you get questions, uh, you can direct, I mean, we, we can send this to all the members, obviously, uh, but, you know, it's on the website as well. Um, the, and this is one, one of the analogies that I said, you're going to be able to get the same level of service you got today, tomorrow, it's just we are slightly changing how you are getting that particular service. Okay, so that was maybe a little bit long-winded response of what's going on, but I haven't had a, we haven't had a group session to come in and, and kind of tell you everything I know. Um, we can talk about, uh, the, the different public meetings moving forward, um, looks like we're going to look at maybe using the second-floor Plaza Gallery space, which is a little bit lo- is a little bit larger, um, for, uh, for, for meetings, uh, we can set that up, and since we don't have traffic, public traffic coming, coming through on a daily basis, we could kind of leave it up there. Uh, so that's something that we're, we're, we're looking at right now, uh, as well. Um, that's, that kind of sums it up.
Hi, so again, thank you for coming tonight to give us this briefing.
Right.
Um, I reached out to you this weekend, because as elected members of the community, our constituents were reaching out to us.
Right.
And I kind of wanted to know a little bit more before the public knew, because they were reaching out to us. So, I appreciate this time right now, but we're hearing about it, kind of after, and I know you safeguard us, because many of us have full-time jobs, but if we could have, like, a, a, a better channel of communication, so...
You know, I, I, um, a lot of this, you know, is, it happens in real time. I, the, the, the stuff that I, s- some of the stuff I've told you today, I have found out by news release. Uh, obviously, the, the, the examples pertaining to the city of Binghamton, you know, that's one thing, but, um, what I announced today was different than what our plan was on Friday. It, it does take us a, a certain amount of time to, to get some of these things together, and we don't like to, um, at the end of the meeting Friday, someone said, should we tell our staffs yet? And I said, no, because I think, you know, over the course of the weekend, things are going to change, uh, and, and they significantly did. It is, even as I was delivering this information, the Governor was, was changing the information that I'm delivering. I, I hear you.
Right.
I hear you, what you're saying. We've never had a situation that's unfolded as rapidly as that, as this.
Of course.
It's one thing about, you know, the, the, the general projects and events that, that we have, and I hear we, what you're saying on, on that as well. Uh, I, all I can, all I can tell you on this is, I hear you, and we will try to do our best. Um, some of this stuff, you know, we find out about, not through news release, or, you know, it might be something that's posted on, you know, CNN or the, uh, National News Store. I mean, it, things are just happening so quickly. The, the county executive was having a news conference, not exactly at the same time, but both of us, the, the Governor started his news conference as mine was ending, and I think the county executive started his news conference as the Governor was ending, and we were both saying things that Governor was either changing, or it's, it's, but, but I hear you, you're, you're going to get calls as well, we want you to have, you know, as, as much information as possible. Uh, we will make every effort in this emergency situation to get you the information as quickly as possible.
Emergency and beyond, so, again, we've talked about this before, you know, just being, having that open communication, so we can advocate together.
Right.
For the best of the city. Because again, we're hearing things, and, and I can't readily respond, so I reach out to those whom I think know best, and, again, we want to be, uh...
Well, you know, what, what, I mean, if we need to start just sending you things in pieces, I mean, that's not something we always like to do either, but, you know, frankly, that's the way that things are going right now. I, I needed to, like, i- it took time for us to line up, being able to do, to, to announce, to get in a position where we could follow through on all of these things. A lot of these things require logistical arrangements.
No, I get it, because we're getting the same thing at the school.
Right.
But again, in, in order to work cohesively as one unit, again...
I don't disagree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Joe, I'm sorry.
The financial part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
If this is going to be, let's say it's going to last six months, I know you have a, a nice, if we have a nice fund balance, do you think that the fund balance would save us to...
Well...
From the, having to raise it?
I, I will...
Drive for good?
Yeah, I will say this, that one of the, one of the primary reasons that we have worked to build up the fund balance is for an emergency situation, and I can think of no greater emergency than, than this. Um, I think we, we would want to be careful about simply just taking the fund balance to plug a hole, because I know that, you know, Chuck would, it would, I've had this conversation with Chuck before too, so he, he doesn't, he, he's not a, uh, we, we would want to take a multifaceted, uh, approach to it. I'm certain that fund balance would be a portion of it, all right? I will reiterate that obviously our goal is, uh, I think many men, I think, uh, as, you know, Jeff and I were just talking, uh, this is going to be a, a true test of the, of the tax cap. Uh, I think a lot of municipalities don't have the cushion that we have, we're not as proactive as we were, and are in deep trouble, frankly. Um, we are in a much stronger position than most, primarily because of the, the strength and leadership, uh, of Chuck and the, and his, his team, building up the bounds, creating the reserves, kind of, you know, putting us in a position so that we could weather the storm, uh, and we will. Uh, but part of this is just, you know, alerting you a- as well, that you know that, you know, we're going to have some, some problems here, it may move us to a position where we're going to have to make some tough choices, and, and, um, you know, time will tell, um, but I, I just want to put it on your radar screen right now. It, it's better now than I present a budget to you, and this is the first time that you, like, you would say, well, why didn't you tell me six months ago that, that these were? This is happening at a time where there's a transition, where new members are, are coming in, so haven't necessarily been through the budget process yet. Um, a lot of times, the budget process, you know, it's, it's part announcement, it's part explanation, you know, as well of, of how things work and how we go about. Uh, and I just felt that I wanted to, to, to bring this to your attention, uh, as, as really as soon as possible, my first opportunity.
Any questions for the Mayor? Um, I'll go to you. You're all good? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for coming down tonight. Um, regarding what the Governor had said today regarding the first responders, police and fire, what is the process that the safety is undertaking to make sure that they have the masks that they need?
Well, uh, you know, there is a shortage, uh, of masks. Uh, one of the things, um, that we've done, and one of the items on your agenda, is going to be to request some money, um, for, you know, the purchase of emergency items, you know, such, such as those. Um, we have things on order, uh, right now. Um, we've talked, you know, I've talked a lot with Chief Eggleston and Chief Zukuski, um, about the supplies they have right now, I mean, they do have supplies, right? It's not as though they, they don't have the basic data, data supplies we need.
They're not starting from a net zero. They're not starting from a net zero.
But, yeah, they're not starting from a net zero, but we expect to go through a higher degree of usage. So, we've ordered those. I believe we have enough to get through the next, to when the next order arrives, which is, you know, it's going to be more than a month, frankly, away. But this is something that we've been talking about the, perhaps for several weeks now. So, there are several things that we've already ordered that are on order that just have a longer lead time. Obviously, police and particularly fire, as fire runs the ambulance or staffs the ambulance, they are in a position to come into contact as a frontline first responder. So, um, they're, they're, they're taking a variety of steps just to protect their employees as we are about educating the employees on what to do if they feel sick and the containment measures that we have put in place.
What about, I'm sorry, what about the garbage collectors? Getting any kind of protection or anything?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just about to ask.
Yeah, I mean, it, it...
No, 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 that's okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, at this point, you know, there's, there's no interaction, there's no public interaction. They're, they're, they're not, at this point, they're not taking any additional steps that they wouldn't already do.
It's just that they, you know, we're all watching the same talking heads, but, you know, they're talking about surfaces.
Right.
You know, so if I just take my garbage out now, it's unjust.
But they always wear gloves to begin with, yeah.
Mayor, you had mentioned that with the changing dynamic of this, you said that there were a number of steps that you are potentially considering that are either short-term or long-term down the road, depending on obviously how the environment overall changes. Would you share with some of those, with us, with some of those perspectives?
Go ahead. I, I will give you some examples of things that could fall under, that I could do in a state of emergency. I'm not saying that I'm going to do those things, but they could possibly happen in the future is, you know, some cities or areas are setting up curfews. Right? Some areas are doing more than closing down bars or restaurants to take out only. They're actually shutting down buildings or are restricting traffic in certain areas. Suspension of laws, suspension of the, you know, procurement procedure in an emergency situation, ensuring a reimbursement. Although, I will say, you know, reimbursement is probably covered by some of the other executive orders, but, you know, that's would be one of the reasons that I would generally want to do a state of emergency. I think that this is moving so quickly. I want to, because I have to, you know, that I could do in a state of emergency. I'm not saying that I'm going to do those things, but they could possibly happen in the future is, you know, some cities or areas are setting up curfews. Right? Some areas are doing more than closing down bars or restaurants to take out only. They're actually shutting down buildings or are restricting traffic in certain areas. Suspension of laws, suspension of the, you know, procurement procedure in an emergency situation, ensuring a reimbursement. Although, I will say, you know, reimbursement is probably covered by some of the other executive orders, but, you know, that's would be one of the reasons that I would generally want to do a state of emergency. I think that this is moving so quickly. I want to, because I have to, you know, file and sign paperwork to do this too. So, part of this is just, you know, allowing me to move quickly in the future to streamline resources, to cut through red tape. Again, I'm not saying that I'm going to do all of those things, but, you know, we're in uncharted waters, you know, right now. I'm, and I'm not saying the things that I've done have been drastic. Although I've never, you know, I've never taken this step and these steps in the six-plus years I've been in office. But if things change and I need to take more drastic measures, I will. And those are some of the things that I could do. The way that has been happening so far is that the governor is so far ahead on this that a lot of these decisions are really being done at the, at the state level. And even your closing the schools. Now, the governor, the governor's position on the closing of schools was, he was going to leave it to the local level. He said the state's position was if there was a confirmed case, they would be shut down for 24 hours while, I say, you know, decontamination, maybe that's not the right word, but disinfectant sanitation would, you know, would come in and they would make a decision to reopen that case. And he left the decision to local elected leaders. And, you know, in this county, the county executive decided to close the schools. So, I mean, that would, that could have been done, you know, by the city, for the city of Binghamton at least. But I will say that in a, in a public health crisis where things are not limited to the geography of the city of Binghamton, it does make sense for the, for some executive orders to come at a higher level of government from the state. For example, if I were to say that I was going to shut down all the bars in the city of Binghamton, bars and restaurants, which is something that I could do under executive order, you could, you could be in Pennsylvania in eight minutes in a bar. You could be in Johnson City, Conklin, Vestal, Endicott, J.C. So, that's just, that's just...
The governor used the same example as that.
Yeah. That just pushes it into the same region.
Right.
And offers a disadvantage to the, so if you're going to do it, you should do it on a large geography if that's the decision that you're going to make. So, some of those decisions, because they're not isolated, you know, will occur at a higher level. So, those are just a couple of examples. And I'm sure there are several that I, you know, I, probably off the top of my head that I, there are other things that we could do to, not just learn those things.
What's the process for a categorization of what is a necessary city employee besides first responders, fire, police?
There is none. It's left to this, it's left to the discretion of the local, of the elected official, according to the governor's...
I'm asking you as the mayor of the city, what do you foresee with that as right now?
Well, I mean, we're having that conversation right now. I mean, my, my position is, you know, everybody that works for the city is essential to something. Otherwise, you know, we wouldn't just have, you know, non-essential people. But if what the governor is asking us, and also, I'm going to preface this by saying, one of the things that we're getting clarification on is, are you asking municipalities to do this if you're leaving your building open to the public? Because if your building is closed to the public, which ours is, I believe that changes what they're going to be asking you to do. So, we might not necessarily have to do this or do it to the level that...
The 50% of all that you call it.
Yeah, that others are. But, you know, and at this point, I mean, we're, I'm going through with, we're having that conversation right now. I mean, the governor's criteria is mission critical to public safety, all right? So, but you can't just leave it to police, fire and public works because people have to get paid. Like, I can't send the finance department home, right? You know, so, and you don't want to just say, okay, certain people within a critical area. Like, I wouldn't say, okay, Chuck, take your, you know, your secretaries or assistants and, I mean, if everybody in the department is needed to run a critical function, then everybody is there, right? I'm not going to send my secretary home because I need her assistance to help me, you know, manage everything. So, are there departments that fall outside the mission critical aspect of public safety in a short-term crisis? There are. I mean, there are. I mean, I don't necessarily want to start listing off departments to, because they're not of any less value than the other departments. But the reality is, if we're going to slow down or stop doing certain functions, like if we're going to not do planning or economic development, you know, for example, and just focus on public safety, you know, I mean, there are departments that would, you know, fall into that category. I mean, you know, personnel is invaluable at this time right now because it's all about making sure that, you know, our safeguards and procedures for protecting employees or the public, you know, is in place. So, I think this is one where more clarification is needed.
So, mayor, I have to be honest. There have been a lot of informal discussions that have occurred between myself and constituents, between myself and other elected officials. And, uh, I'm incredibly concerned at the manner at which the meeting that occurred last Friday and rippled through until today landed in our laps. Okay? And I think it's important to separate substance from process. You had said earlier when you were answering Councilman Riley's question, I believe, you said that it's a changing dynamic and you're hearing things as they change. And you're correct, right? So, you had a, you had a press conference this morning, I think it was 10:30. And the governor started shortly after that. And there were things about, you know, making sure that first responders had masks and the reduction of city employees that came after. So, you're right, on a substantive level. But my question is, with this meeting that happened on Friday, why were there not invites sent out to either the seven of us or at least one of us that, given on a technicality, out of everybody that walks in and out of this building every day of every week of every month of every year, there are only eight elected officials in this building? And to my knowledge, and please correct me if I'm wrong, seven of those eight people that coincidentally happened to represent 100% of a co-equal branch of government in this city did not receive invitations. Now, for what it's worth, from a logistical perspective, okay, I understand, like, for example, I would not have been able to attend your press conference this morning at 10:30 because at 10:30 a.m. I was teaching microeconomics, okay? I get that, right? Your full-time, we're not in that scalability level from a payroll level. Lord knows, I've worked with you on many projects. I know you work more than, way than 40 hours a week, right? But again, not on substance of thing A that I knew at time B changed to thing C five minutes later, which is a very, very good point because, as you said, this is uncharted waters. But from the perspective of process and process alone, why were we not included in this logistical and planning process? So, for example, what I heard informally was that meetings were going to occur here. Planning, ZVA, council work session in business, which we obviously already knew because of the updates that are being done in the council chambers, right? Why were we not a part of that original conversation? I'm fairly certain that you would probably agree with me that from a functional perspective, right? Two heads are better than one, five heads are better than two, and so on and so on and so forth, right? And that disallows us, in my opinion, two things. Number one, the ability to do our job regardless of the fact that it's a changing dynamic. And number two, I am disabled from supporting your efforts as chief executive officer of this city when I have no idea what is going on, when I am hearing it third, fourth and fifth level.
So, okay, so a couple of things. You know, one is you're hearing things that were not what the city's plan is.
Such as?
Well, everything that you just outlined is not what we're doing about, right? We're not having those meetings in this room.
Correct.
So, you know, clearly, you know, I need to reevaluate, you know, who I include in those planning meetings. Right, is one of the things I think that I need to do. Because what I don't want is misinformation going out. I didn't even make the decision on whether or not I was going to have the news conference today, until today. I told everybody in that room on Friday that this was an evolving situation.
Sure.
I didn't know whether or not we were going to move forward in the capacity we were moving forward. And I was going to take, and we were taking time to move in different directions.
Right.
So, out of that meeting, bits and pieces leaked out, created misinformation.
Right.
And that is exactly what should not happen in a crisis. So, if you want to support what's going on, you support this. Because this is what the plan is. Putting out, you know, bits and pieces or here are all the things that we discussed, there was not a, there, we were, that was the beginning of a conversation on how the city was going to respond to this. And that's the job of the administration. I understand, you know, your position is you would have liked me to invite the seven of you. Frankly, I don't see a scenario where I would do that. To be honest with you, I mean, that, this is the, this is the job of the administration. In the future, if you, if you're saying you want, I mean, you're saying you want somebody to sit in on the meetings that we're having to determine, you know, what our response is going to be? I, I mean, part of it is we, we, we put together the response and, and I'm, and now I'm bringing it to you. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure, it seems like you're upset because I didn't invite you or I didn't invite the council members. I mean, I think what concerns me is the fact that misinformation made it to you. That's something that is, you know, is very frustrating to me because that really shouldn't have happened. And it was made very clear to the people in that room that this is a discussion. I mean, you have to have a starting point. You have to start somewhere and say, how are we going to, you know, respond to this? And the people who are responsible for implementing this were the people that were in the room.
Right, but mayor, respectfully, a number of suggestions, okay? If you're going to reevaluate the people at the table, my suggestion, respectfully to you, would be to broaden it rather than make it small. That would be number one.
Okay, so, but, but...
Mayor, this is a conversation.
Okay, go ahead, converse.
Okay. Number two, okay? You're bringing forward, again, to a co-equal branch of government, a proposed plan to be administered that a co-equal branch of government had no say in. Okay? Respectfully, I would maintain that the way to decrease disinformation is to have everyone at the table from the beginning.
I think that's how you increase the dissemination of misinformation.
Well, then, mayor, respectfully, that we'll just have to agree to disagree.
Then we'll, then we'll agree to disagree.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is the administration's responsibility. It's ultimately my decision on what I'm going to implement. I understand that you would have liked to have input. You've voiced that and I'll take that into consideration in the future. But I think what you have shown tonight is an example of why that doesn't work. Misinformation made it to you and to probably other council members that it shouldn't have and that was probably spread outside of this room. And that's the worst thing you can have in a crisis is conflicting messages and the dissemination of misinformation. I mean, I have to have a starting point somewhere where we talk about what the response is going to be and talk about scenarios that we didn't even implement. Talked about a whole variety of different things.
That's not a bad thing.
I don't, I don't think that's a bad thing. But the fact that, obviously, you know, you, you're concerned about what you heard even though we were just talking about, you know, different scenarios, I think is unfortunate. And I frankly feel bad about that because, you know, the, that misinformation shouldn't have, shouldn't, shouldn't have gotten out of that room. Because what you just outlined, you said what you heard is not what was announced today, right?
Mayor, I'm going to end this right now. I appreciate you coming down and talking to us. We're going to move on to our agenda. I appreciate you coming down and talking, all right?
Okay. Thank you.
Because we can talk on that. Megan, you first.
Hi. Okay, on a much later note than that, RL 20-57. Uh, okay, this is, um, uh, offered a purchase for a vacant lot through the city's side lot program. 14 Earl Drive on the south side was a fire damaged home that the city demolished last month. Um, one of the neighbors directly next to the property put in and offered a purchase... One of the neighbors directly next to the property put in and offered a purchase. That three hundred dollar offer to purchase price is the fair market value determined by the assessor's office. And you can see his plan in some of the documents here. He basically just wants to keep a green space, which is the intent of the program, with possible driveway in the future and a vegetable garden, which the planning department has okayed.
Want you to comment on this?
Yes.
So, the vacant properties that are the adjacent properties, I forgot the official title, they are listed somewhere for residents of the city at the fair market value so that they can submit a bid at fair market value to own the property.
Yeah, so usually what we do is, each round of demolitions that we have, we'll follow, we'll proceed the demolitions with a letter to residents of that neighborhood, letting them know a lighted property is coming down. And then, either just before or right after the property is down, we'll send out a letter to each of the adjacent property owners, letting them know, as long as it qualifies and it makes sense to do it through the side lot program and it's not, you know, a lot that we want to add to a park as a park expansion, if it qualifies for this program, we'll send a letter to each of the neighbors, letting them know that's the fair market value if they want to put an offer in.
Now, is there a time limit? So, say, for example, Mr. Smith down the block then decides he wants fourteen Earl. What happens?
Yeah, so, in our letter, we give, I think we tell the residents, we'll give them thirty days, but I can get you a copy of the letter that we send out, Angela, with like the guidelines on it.
Thank you, just so we're aware. So, we will never see another letter from fifteen Earl that's upset that they were not given fair warning.
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't have that often. This is one case where our, our office got a call from someone who was, hadn't yet closed on a property on the other side of this vacant lot and was interested in putting an offer in. That's honestly the first time it's happened. Normally, we put it out, we wait the thirty days, and there's one offer or no offers. With this case, since the person hadn't closed on it yet, Mr. Benson got his offer in for the fair market value well before it met planning department approval. And it's basically, what he's proposing is basically exactly what the intent of the program is, just more green space. And, you know, he's sort of promising to keep it and maintain it that way. That was really, we just kind of moved forward with this one.
Thank you.
Want you to comment? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
President Scanlon?
Yes.
Before we move on, if I could just jump in real quick while Grace is grabbing Ray. Just in case there's any questions about the mayor's legal authority regarding, you know, what's going on and the state of emergency that was declared, you can feel free to call our office. The section of law, I did just want to put this on the record, the section of law that we look to is New York State Executive Law, Section Twenty-four, subsection E in particular. The whole, that whole section of law has various actions that a local chief executive can take, so you can take a look at that if you have more questions. If you have more questions, you can feel free to call us. The executive order, I do have a copy, I did bring a copy of the governor's executive order regarding the suspension of Article Seven of the Public Officers' Law regarding open meetings. I actually do have a copy that, I'll just hand this to Lee in case anybody here now...
He also mentioned that someone was emailing us, right?
Oh, yeah, I think...
He said Jared?
Man, let's, man, let's say Chief's a ghost here, we can do this.
Sure, sure, we can do this. Thank you.
Asking the council to accept a grant, a matching grant from DCJS. We don't fingerprint like you see on TV anymore. Most larger police departments don't, it's all via computers. It's called LifeScan, where we get results back within ten, fifteen minutes if you are who you say you are or if you want it. And it hooks up to other police agencies. The state in its wisdom made everybody, the entire state's equipment obsolete. So, everybody's got to purchase a new. So, originally, it was thirty thousand dollars, but we're getting it for like, there's been all the meetings and all the, all the agencies in the county have gone to the meetings and it's gonna be like seventeen, eighteen. So, they would match up to ten grand. So, I think their matching figure's like seventy-eight hundred.
Question or comments for Chief, go ahead.
Hi, I'm just wondering why this is expedited?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is it a grant, does it have some sort of a deadline?
Well, I know this, it came out, there might be a deadline. I know the Intel Center...
Start, right. So, start date for the award is April first.
And we don't have a works...
So, okay.
We don't have a works action.
So, it's the deadline of the award.
Guys, thank you.
Sorry.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Evening.
Ray. Tell us about RL twenty dash five eight.
That RL is to authorize the mayor to enter into a term agreement with Keystone Environmental Services for our term contract for environmental testing.
This is a yearly contract?
It's a yearly contract. The agreement allows for two additional years.
Everybody agreed, right?
Right.
Question or comments for Mr. Stanich? Thank you, Ray, that was easy.
Yep, that was easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up. Tell us about RL two oh point six one, please.
All right. Well, we won the city's highest grant, and part of the grant was creating a position to run our Housing Nine One One program, and that's creating a housing safety specialist. They'll be cross-trained in code inspection and conflict resolution. So, we're asking to transfer, we need to create the position, and then it's gonna be funded through the grant, but I think they transfer the funds first and then they get paid back through the grant. So, we're getting a four hundred thousand dollar advance right up front, so it's, we won't be fronting it for long, so...
So, what is this person gonna do specifically to that?
Well, it's, the grant was a three-part grant, so the one section of it is dealing, well, it's, it's called the Housing Nine One One, it's kind of a call center. It's creating an avenue for the public to call and have all of their questions answered. If it's a tenant that's having issues with a landlord, they can speak on behalf of the tenant, they can go to the property, and they'll actually have a hundred thousand dollar budget to make immediate life safety repairs, and then bill the landlord. Because a lot of the calls that we get, we have no, no ability to help the people, and we end up just forwarding them and transferring them. So, this person will have all the information on housing programs available, funding available, as well as being a code inspector and able to deal with issues.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the beginning of that program, so, first half.
Just a question, we're excited about the grant and the position. What will happen after this funding period ends with the position?
Well, I'm asking the grant administrators if we can combine, we're supposed to also hire another person, another position. If we can add some funding to this, we can keep it for two full years funded. That's my goal. And then, I'm hoping at the end of those two years, to come back to city council and say, could you please continue funding it? That's my plan.
The one thing that everyone needs to know is, the money that she has in this transfer is only to cover us from, I think, April time period till the end of the year.
Right.
You'll see the other amount for next year in next year's budget. Okay, this is only to cover from now till the end of the year. I think what they can be paid for, so I think you...
Yeah, that's fine, so... And Civil Service Commission has already approved the position, so it's...
Other questions or comments? All right, tell us about the next one, please, Megan.
The second one is, we're requesting to have a historic planner two level position created. It also went through Civil Service Commission. This will give our historic planner an opportunity to move up into a more senior position. That's basically it.
Question or comments on this?
We lose a lot of people. They come and get trained, and then they, we're like the farm team, and then they move on for more money, so we're trying to slow that.
Well, I think he does a good job of just issuing some...
Yeah, okay.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Chuck Shager, Kent Franklin, Eric Crisp.
I'm Kent. First RL is DOT easement. This is actually previously approved by city council in years past. This is, Forty-two Bevieve Street is a vacant lot on the corner of Bronson and Bevieve, and the DOT utilized it for some staging. So, we thought that this easement was approved and everything was fine. DOT contact, our legal department asked us to update the easement for their records. So, it's more of a record-keeping thing for the New York State DOT.
More of a language change, you say?
No, no, they just wanted us to have an updated version of the easement. So, this is the same thing we've done before.
All right, on to, to your business.
This is, back in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we moved over two and a half million dollars into a reserve fund to assist in paying for the Seven Holly Street parking ramp. We've got all the bids in, and at this point, we'd like to move one point five million out of the reserve fund into a line to pay for the remaining portion that's not on a bond for the Seven Holly Street garage. From a simplistic standpoint, I think the total amount that we need is about one point one million, and we have four hundred thousand dollars for potential change orders. Not that we expect that to happen, but we're using that to be a safety precaution. If we did not use that four hundred thousand dollars, we would come back here and tell you that we want to use that money to pay down the bond with that four hundred thousand.
Question or comments on that?
So, there's basically two things here. One is to, okay, the movement of the one point five million dollars out of the reserve, okay? The second one is to create a line to pay for one point five, up to one point five million dollars on the parking ramp. We have a bond for eight point eight million dollars, and we said the ramp could cost up to eight point eight plus two point five. I think it was a two point, yeah, two point five, or was it eleven point three million dollars? It's not gonna be that high. After all the numbers came in so far, we're gonna be about a nine million dollar, no, about a ten million dollar ramp is what the total cost is when you take the eight point eight plus, I think, another one point one million, so it's nine point nine million is gonna be the cost of the ramp before we have any potential change orders.
So, Chuck, is it safe to say that some years ago, city council created this reserve fund, and they have to now take an action to...
Yes, yes.
Spend the money out of that reserve?
We put the reserve fund for this specific reason, back in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. At the end of the year, when we had a fund balance, we wanted to appropriate that fund balance for this specific project, as well as, like the mayor said, for some health insurance, potential retirement costs, tax stabilization. I think there was about seven different things that we put money into. Two and a half million of it was for this ramp.
Question or comments? Yes.
So, the parking ramps reserve fund, is that separate from fund balance? Or is that within the fund balance?
It's part, it's, it's part of the twenty million dollar fund balance.
So, we're taking from the fund balance?
Yes, to do this, correct. Out of that, let's just say that the fund balance is twenty-one million dollars. Two point five million of that twenty-one million was set aside for this project. It's what they call restricted fund balance versus unrestricted.
What we did a few years ago was, we took a few million in the reserve balance and we put it in certain categories that needed, that are restricted only to that thing. So, for example, rising healthcare costs, hedging costs, garage, stuff like that.
So, our intention with doing this was to make sure that down the road, this ramp can support itself. It doesn't need funds from the general fund or the taxpayers to support it.
Right.
With the revenue coming in, the cost of it, the debt load, it could pay for itself.
Right. So, so, in the mayor's speech, he said, we have a twenty million dollar fund balance, but we knew we were gonna spend... We knew that this money was already spent on that fund.
Correct, yes.
Okay, right.
Other questions or comments?
President Scanlon, I just wanted to add something. Chuck, if you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but at least for purposes of the business meeting on Wednesday, I believe twenty dash sixty-two needs to...
What we did a few years ago was, we took a few million in the reserve balance and we put it in certain categories that needed, that are restricted only to that thing. So, for example, rising healthcare costs, hedging costs, garage, stuff like that.
So, our intention with doing this was to make sure that down the road, this ramp can support itself. It doesn't need funds from the general fund or the taxpayers to support it.
Right.
With the revenue coming in, the cost of it, the debt load, it could pay for itself.
Right. So, so, in the mayor's speech, he said, we have a twenty million dollar fund balance, but we knew we were gonna spend... We knew that this money was already spent on that fund.
Correct, yes.
Okay, right.
Other questions or comments?
President Scanlon, I just wanted to add something. Chuck, if you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but at least for purposes of the business meeting on Wednesday, I believe twenty dash sixty-two needs to be approved first because that actually creates the line, and then twenty dash sixty would come after because that's the actual transfer.
Correct.
Okay, so just for purposes of the business meeting, I want to say that.
Thank you. Chuck, is this expedited?
Yes, if you could.
We have to also expedite the twenty sixty-two also.
Right.
Can you change that, please?
Yes.
All right, you've already told somebody, tell us about twenty sixty-two, please.
That, that's, sixty-two is just creating the line and moving the money from the reserve fund into the line.
Okay, tell us about twenty sixty-four.
Can I just...
Sure, sure.
I know I sound like a broken record, but why is this one expedited? I mean, I know they both have to be expedited together, but why are they both expedited?
Because we got all the bids in, and in order to award the bids, I need all the money out there to do it. I couldn't come and do it till I knew how much I needed.
Right.
Okay, so now, since your last meeting, we got all the numbers, so I won't be able to award this until you approve it.
Okay, so you just...
I can award some of it.
It's just expedited, so...
We can award all the contracts and get the work going.
So, we keep the whole process going?
Yes. Our process right now is to have them start digging in April, okay?
Okay.
The foundation holes being dug the first week of April, you should start seeing work there.
Okay, just clarify for me, because you mentioned one point five was reserved.
Mm-hmm.
We have an estimate of one point one for the renovations, and you said the remaining four hundred would be then utilized to cover some of the things the mayor discussed?
No, no. The four hundred thousand would be utilized if we have change orders.
Okay.
Okay, on the bidding process. Example being is, we're still working with the contractors on NWB eas...
Okay, so it's just in case changes occur to the initial...
To this project, yes.
Project, not using for other line items or...
No.
Okay.
No, this, this will go...
I heard...
Angela, this will go to this one line item strictly for Seven Holly Street, that is it. If we get done and we have, say, three hundred thousand dollars left, I will come back here...
Then you'll come back.
No, I'll come back and say, here's how we want to use it, probably to pay down the eight point eight million dollar debt on that loan, okay?
Any questions or comments? All right, Chuck, on the two oh six four, please.
Twenty sixty-four, similar situation, and I don't have all the numbers right here in front of me. We have a green roof project going on this building, meaning the council chambers and city hall building. All the bids came in. The original project was a lot bigger than this, okay? We scaled it down, and the state is allowing us to... We scaled, scaled it down and, uh, the state is allowing us to, and I think the number here is, this, this one point six million, Jared?
State grant, yep.
The state grant is one point six million. The total project, uh, in bids that we got in are gonna come in at one point seven seven something or of that nature. And we, the state's only gonna pay the one point six, we have to pay our ten percent share or roughly thereabouts, a hundred, I think it's a hundred and seventy thousand, is gonna come from a city improvement bond line. This is just how we're gonna spend the money that we have to do to finish this project.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you. Jerry, you have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
Oh, is it expedited?
Yeah, why is it expedited?
Same situation that we got the bids and we now know the cost and, uh, we'd like to get the project moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Just clarify for me again, now a bond ordinance is similar to a loan, correct, or no?
Not really. A bond, it is, it is a loan, but it's not. A, a bond ordinance is giving us the authority to borrow money for a specific project.
Borrow it from whom?
From whoever is the lowest bidder.
Okay, so we are bonding one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to support a grant?
Yes.
So then we're beholden to whomever we borrowed this money from?
Correct.
Right? Where we have reserve funds where we wouldn't have to pay interest and fees, right?
You could do that, yes, you could do that.
Okay, so maybe we can talk about line because why do we choose to?
Because you need to keep a certain level of fund balance for the state.
Okay.
Okay, so we're trying to play the happy medium, okay, between everything so that we have the, the right amount of fund balance and minimize our debt payments.
Got it.
Okay.
Do we know the rate and which will be paying back this one hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Angela, I suggest you make time and come talk to me on it, okay?
That's what I said, if I need a meeting, let me know.
Yes, no, you, yes, I think if I walk you through the whole bond process.
No, and that's, that's fine, that's why I said, if we need a sidebar, we let them know.
I think that would be easier. And I guess, Aviva, was that helpful to you?
Yes, why is it like me?
Well, you, you came and asked, you came and you.
I'll go to the meeting.
Thank you. No, I would love to go, I'm just joking. Yes, I.
It would not hurt any of you.
Why is it this side of the table, Chuck?
No.
I'll keep my mouth shut on that one.
You got a couple financial people over here.
Okay, that's why.
I'll tell you what I was gonna say, but.
Is this on?
I can impugn it.
Well, one, one last thing, and I don't know, I, I got here late on the mayor's, uh, conversation. What he wanted, and I thought there was an RL down here.
There is, there is, we got it.
Okay, want me to talk about it?
Yeah, whoever wants to.
Yes. What we're taking is twenty-five thousand dollars out of fund balance, okay, to put into a coronavirus expense account that we can track the expenses on. Okay, it's not much money, uh, but hopefully we don't need much. But if we do need more, we'll come down here and maybe have another source that we can find it. I couldn't find twenty-five thousand dollars to really take out of someplace that I felt comfortable with on Friday when the mayor talked to me about this.
This RL was in everybody's mailboxes on top of it.
Yeah, yeah. Questions or comments on this? Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Chuck and Jared, do we have any sense of what the frequency of cleanings will be?
Daily, uh, here at City Hall.
Right.
Daily, all five floors, so all touch points, daily, they were in this room today.
And it's, it's twice a day, actually?
It's gonna be twice a day.
Twice a day?
And it's, just so you know, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day for the people to do it, is what it is.
It's all regular people, then?
Yep.
No, that's why I asked.
Cause they're.
Other questions or comments on this?
Is?
Sure.
Is, so the sole purpose of this is to maintain the, the sterility of this building, um, that's what this fund is for?
Or if something else came up with it that we had to spend that we, that we don't know about, okay, but yes, it's how do we control the?
Related to virus COVID nineteen.
That's related to COVID nineteen.
Yes, I wanna just say this building because it could be DPW building, it could be a fire station.
Okay.
It's really assisting controlling the virus itself and how we can.
Okay.
Thank you. I, so if it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day to clean, we, you said we're saving some money maybe for other buildings, but is, is this all for cleaning and sanitizing?
Yes, that's what the two.
So we have theoretically enough for one hundred days worth of cleaning or?
If we didn't spend any other things, but we bought other things too, such as sanitary wipes for the offices. And we've got a, a lot of different things. If you were to go through City Hall, you'll see different, uh, things where you can have that, clean your hands throughout. I mean, we've done a, a little bit, not a huge amount of monies, but things to help the employees and the people that are here.
Okay, so it's primarily, the focus is primarily cleaning and then, you know, whatever?
And it, the other thing that's an important aspect of this, this account is being set up so that if we do get funding from the federal government, we have it all centralized. That we can go through that line and say, this is where we spent money on this that we're asking for reimbursement. Let's just say that this goes up to a million dollars, like a FEMA situation, we'll have all that money captured in one account.
And if, how, um, how many days are we planning to clean?
I don't think anybody knows that, Aviva.
Right, so I'm just thinking in terms of what to plan.
We can cancel this and, what was it, a day's notice, Matt? Thinking a day's notice.
We don't have a, we don't have a current timeline, I know we're at least doing it for next couple of weeks and then reevaluate from there.
Okay, I don't wanna sound overly, I'm just trying to learn, you know, where, so if constituents ask us, we know exactly what, what their money is gonna be.
As the mayor is speaking, things are changing on a regular basis and let me give you.
Yeah.
Scanlon, if you give me less than three minutes, I just wanna clarify something with Gio. Here's some of the issues, and I'm not trying to defend the mayor, okay, but we sat down and, as department heads have gone through our different departments, and what happens if we have to shut down? Do we have a, can we work remotely? Who can? I have to make sure everybody gets paid, okay, how can we do that? Uh, let's, he talked about DPW, but I'm gonna give you an important aspect, water. We have to have that water filtration plant going twenty-four seven with no exceptions. Do we have enough chemicals in, on hand? What, what is our essential chemical that could give us a problem? There is one that we can't keep on hand for specific reasons, okay? How do you, how does things change? We talked about, do we wanna do a shut-off notice? Of course not, okay, but we didn't wanna make that public. Uh, that was the initial thing is we'll go through the whole process, but we wouldn't shut people off. Because even though you say people aren't gonna, if they get paid, they're gonna do it. I could tell you that there's a lot of people in Binghamton that are gonna try to beat the system. They do every month, okay? Now that Governor Cuomo said there's no utility shut-offs, I'm gonna guarantee you, we're gonna have a problem come four months when this is all up there with people abusing the system. But I'm just, I'm just trying to show you, there's a lot of different things that we talked about that I'm not positive.
Right, but, but we're, we're trying to kind of ask, saying how much money should be in this fund line?
Oh.
Not really kind of.
No, no, the, I'm saying twenty-five thousand.
Right. And that's why we were asking the questions to determine if we needed to add more, so then we won't have to come back in three weeks to, to reassess this line again. And that's why we were asking the questions.
I, I think the answer to that question is, at this point in time, twenty-five thousand, yeah, right, twenty-five thousand will get us till the next meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I think after that, we'll have a better idea what is all involved here.
And I, I, I will, I will say, Councilman, in Chuck's defense on that one, hypothetically, let's even say that, you know, things clear up in two weeks and, and it's got, and it's got ten thousand extra, we're gonna have to come back to reassign that extras anyway.
Right, we don't wanna have that stuck up. Yes.
So it also gives us an opportunity for additional oversight to know how much to go in.
Perfect. Personally, when we do have to advocate for this in our communities, I would like kind of a better outline of what it's for. And I'm glad you did give us that, a better.
This, I haven't, I haven't, I wasn't here Friday afternoon and I haven't really been here. I've been in and out of here today due to some family issues, so I wrote these things pretty quickly today, so.
So.
Put them together as fast as I could.
Thank you, Chuck and Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, look at the penny legislation, talk about it, or anything you wanna talk about for a second?
Said, did you get my email? Uh, yes, same. Uh, Councilwoman Riley had a RL showing to talk about.
Is it officially on the agenda? So we, um, we entered this new state of, uh, this COVID nineteen world we're now living in. I've mentioned earlier that March is Women's History Month. And so I proposed a legislation, um, a resolution of sorts to recognize the women throughout Binghamton legislative history. And we're gonna have this big thing with the women coming to City Council, which can no longer happen.
You wanna hold off on it then?
No, it's in March.
So hard. I just hope you wanted to come to a meeting later on in life, but it's.
Well, we can, we can still, I can still share with you all, we can still talk about it.
Sure.
Um.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We're going to have our web-based, public-facing announcement. So I think it's still worthwhile to recognize the women in history that have done things, particularly the first female mayor, the first female acting mayor, and the three women on City Council this year, for the next four years. So that's what this RL is about.
My grandmother was the stenographer in the nineteen fifties.
See, and recognizing her as a woman.
City judge.
And recognizing grace, no, but recognizing all women, but highlighting these. And again, it was gonna be a bit to do with this big business motion that's at the end of the month, which was postponed, but.
Okay.
So you just say this and read it?
I can, I have a sign-on sheet if you want to do that.
Yeah.
What it gets to you?
It's twenty sixty-six. I think he just printed it and handed it out. I don't think we received it electronically.
Right, and I can circulate that electronically.
I'll just now?
Is it enough, is it over there?
No, not at all.
Let's go back to redo that.
No, I think I did two, three, I think I did four in the council area. That was funny, what?
Why isn't it expedited?
That's a good point, it shouldn't.
We're the experts, man.
It is expedited, it's been done before March, yes.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No, we're not done.
I thought you said.
No, we didn't finalize, are we, are we ready to go for Wednesday with the?
Yeah, I, I don't see.
Oh, with, oh, with the, uh?
And the movement, I mean, he said it's probable, do we need to propose legislation?
Did you, did you come in video-wise?
No, there's a legislation for that, we can decide as a group, but it's not gonna happen by Wednesday, I can tell you that.
Well, he said Wednesday.
Live streaming, like live streaming the?
Live streaming is gonna happen by Wednesday.
But he also said the second floor would happen by Wednesday.
Oh, I, we could, we can advise us on that later on in life, I mean, tomorrow, right, he can tell us about that, but I don't know, he'll let us know where we're gonna meet, but we'll have a meeting here on Wednesday. Yes.
I was thinking, uh, we'll, we'll, you know, they have on Facebook, uh, on the live Facebook, people can comment, you know? Where I was wondering if in the future, if we're live streaming something, we could say people, we've done their, their, their time.
Should we talk about that, yeah, absolutely.
Time, ahead of time, and they can, they can say their comments?
Yeah.
Type thing, online to us, and open up all.
Yeah, Councilman.
Could be more than one council.
Sure, I think there, there was some discussion about, uh, maybe a memo going out or when the, the, uh, this night's recording posts to the city's website. There, there may be, uh, a way for us to, to reach out to the community or post something on the website where people can email in, uh, their questions and have them be, potentially read into the records.
Would, would that discuss it?
Right, right, right.
Would that occur?
That, a couple hours ago, uh, this, it, it's still, we're, we're still figuring it out.
Well, oh, no.
See, my, my concern here, my, my concern here is, um, constituents' ability to be able to have input in the meeting. So for example, I, I don't even think this came up this evening regarding the whole calling in, at least in depth.
I think the, with the barista, they're still trying to figure out how to do this.
They're trying, and that's fine, you know? And try, trying to work out the kinks, I, I understand that, but like, for example, constituents should be very made publicly known that, um, you know, that they can email things in that can be read in by the clerk or that can be read in by council members. You know, maybe we need to amend the agenda at least for some of these meetings. So like, for example, Councilman Byrne says if someone sends in a question or tweets a question or posts something to Facebook, that there can actually be some sort of a conversation where, you know, there's a Q and A or a discussion around that point, um.
That sounds, Gio, that, that sounds good, I mean, sure, because nothing's gonna change, they can certainly submit something to you and you can read it to the record.
Sure, or, or the court's all for this or?
Like, they told us that public comment, we can work on that too, that makes sense to me, public comment, we have certain times.
We, we don't wanna have it throughout the meeting.
No, no.
No, yeah, it would be just like the public comment.
Here's the problem, how, how do we know? When we cut off the public comment, here's the problem, I, how do I say, all right, no, I don't see anybody typing, so we're done? You know, you gotta, you gotta give a certain time.
Well, you have to, you know.
They can, well, you know.
That time did it.
Well, ultimately, I'll just leave it to the council and, uh, as the, as council president, President Scanlon, you know, you decide questions of order, so ultimately, you know, it's, it's really your decision as far as, as, you know, what you wanna do as far as public comment. I'll also say that city code, uh, it's, it's a, a permissive, uh, a section of the code regarding public comment, it's not a requirement. Uh, Broom County does not do public comment in their, in their meetings, so, you know, that's, it's something for you to consider, uh, as president of the council and something for the rest of the.
All right, we're gonna learn as we go here, obviously, it's gonna be a learning process all the way through, go ahead.
Uh, what about a, a conference call setup? Can we have constituents call in and listen and then, you know, we can post the, the meeting ID and that way, you know, we can ask everyone to put themselves on mute, whether or not they're not gonna do that, you know, the rights to the.
I've done one, that would be, I think that's a question for Lori, probably if that's, if that's possible or not.
Yeah, if it's live streaming.
Well, because I know, like, we have a meeting coming up on Thursday that is now being moved to on the, on conference call style. So why couldn't that be done, if we're meeting in this room, why couldn't that be done?
You're probably cutting off hundreds of people in this meeting.
It's a question of course.
Yeah, but that's okay, I, I'm in on conference call.
The controller can block and mute everyone, everybody.
Yeah, and at work, I've been on conference calls where there were dozens of people on the call, yeah, so you can mute.
There's, there's another possibility altogether, if this room isn't going to be the location as many different ideas were being discussed, if it's going to be on the second floor, that's a much larger area, so I, I don't see why it wouldn't entirely be possible to, even if it has to happen in some sort of regulated fashion with, you know, a certain number of people going upstairs, uh, you know, say, three at a time or something like that. I just, I, I, I think there's, i- if we have the, if we have the ability physically to practice social distancing, I, I don't like the idea of limiting the ability for the public to not have an impact on those meetings. Obviously, we wanna encourage, like, send an email to the clerk so it can be read in, you know, do it electronically, do it digitally if possible, but and, and that's a very big concern I have, if, if the possibility is for it to be. But we're already over ten people right now. Right, but are we looking at that through the lens of this space versus this space outside here? I'm just saying, it's a new.
We talked about the video.
CDC or whoever they are, came out today and said, it's not fifteen more, it's ten. Yeah, ten now, exactly, so.
And that doesn't, I, I don't know if that's concerning us, but we talked about doing a video conference or a meeting, so that doesn't, I don't, I don't anticipate meeting as a group.
With people calling in.
Well, I, we would be all at your remote location.
Right.
Doing a meeting.
Right.
You know what I mean, so I don't anticipate getting together as a group, I don't think we should get together as a group, that's my opinion.
Okay, so those, those are two different platforms then? So one, we're talking about live streaming a functional meeting. Part two is actually doing a web-based meeting.
And we need, we need Lori, we need Lori's input on this, so you can, have, Lee, why don't you contact Lori, tell her what we're trying to do? I'm thinking about having people call in a certain section, I mean, just like public comment. And then, um, and then let us know what she's saying, what, I know it's, it's all new for her too, I guess.
Sure.
All right, the concern though is that we've been talking about this since we all took office. And now we have a critical need. And the mayor said this is gonna be put in place by Wednesday, so what is being put in? Right, the concern though, is that we've been talking about this since we all took office, and now we have a critical need, and the mayor said this is gonna be put in place by Wednesday, so what is being put in place?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear him guarantee Wednesday, I didn't hear him do that.
Grace, you just repeated, he said Wednesday live.
Oh, the, 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 the video, the, the, the live, like.
The live stream, yes, that piece. That piece will be.
It's the, it's the recording of it, right, they can say live.
He said live stream, recording of that, yeah.
Recording of it.
So that is step one, that's, cause remember, we're talking about two different things.
Once we set that up, we just keep it going.
Right.
We also have to remember that Lori has a lot of things too on her plate that she's kinda dealing with as well, so we will probably have live stream, I think, but we just have to.
Right, but we have to prioritize and stay as close to the law as possible, allowing the public to be a part of these meetings.
Yes. Yes, and also.
Well, you know, Angela, this, we don't have to allow the public, it's based on what the governor said, these meetings are closed to the public, so should we, should we live stream this, absolutely, if she can't get to it by Wednesday, so be it, I'm not gonna worry about that, because she's got a lot going on, obviously. So the priority isn't to live stream our meeting, to me, to the public, is it for the next meeting after that? Sure, it's, there's three weeks in between, so she can't get it by. Yeah, she can't get it by Wednesday, I, I'm not gonna worry about that.
Hopefully by that point, if I have enough thing in it.
Exactly, right, I'm pretty sure it's all done, yeah, but if, if she can get it by Wednesday, it certainly can happen, I hope she can, but I'm not sure she can.
Okay. And then I wanna go backwards one more step, because you said there was a meeting to me that discussed what would happen based upon council's approval.
Well, it wasn't. I don't think it would be fair to say it was a meeting.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there, there have been informal discussions that were still kinda, again, I mean, we're, I was not a part of any, any meeting with department heads or anything like that, but.
Moving along, okay. Okay, no, 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 I'm not trying to stir up anything, I just wanna be clear about what you shared a minute ago.
Sure, sure, no, so, we're, we're still trying to come up with, with ideas on how to best go forward here, so I, I think, um, Lori is, is really the point person on all this. Um, you know, Lori, Lori will coordinate with the clerk's office to determine what the best way to go forward is, um, as far as she sees it realistically. Um, the other thing I'll say, though, as far as the, the governor's executive order, um, that specifically, uh, allows for, um, live, live recording or live streaming, um, and recording, so the, 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 we're permitted to, to suspend Article seven of the public officer's law, provided that, uh, uh, there, there is, um, recr, uh, recorded, um, recorded meeting that's available, um, after the meeting is completed, so that's, again, this is, this is all new for us, we're kinda learning it as we go, and, you know, everybody's doing the best they can, but, um, as Grace said, you know, the, the goal is to have live streaming on Wednesday, if, if we can get that. And as far as tonight's meeting, the intention is to have that posted to the city's website, um, as soon as possible.
With the communication, I'm, again, trying to repeat what you said, with communication that says.
Uh, if, well, we, again, we need to, uh, Lee and I'll have a conversation after the meeting, uh, regarding emailing in, if people wanna provide, uh, a public comment, but again, that's, I don't, I don't wanna say too much there, because that's, that's really your decision, that's not, that's not my decision. If, if, if council wants to do that, um, that's, that's really your decision.
Um, I know, we keep hearing, if it's possible by, by Wednesday, the live streaming, so I just wondered, can we solidify a backup plan of a conference call, because that's infrastructure that I know we have already.
Again, that's, it, it, that's really a question for.
We're on events, we're on events.
It's a question for Lori, I, 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 that's not really mine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that really might.
Okay.
But I, again, I, I'm gonna say, if we can't live stream this meeting on, on Wednesday, that's not the end of the world, they can, they can get it, record it ever later on, it's, it's, I understand we should be transparent to the public, but this is a different time.
This is all like a conspiracy, it's about having limited time to make this happen, it's a lunacy.
So again, that's my opinion, so, no, no, it's fine, it's fine, I don't, I don't know what we can do other than Lori trying, but.
Yeah, right, I, I just feel like the conference call, I mean, I, I've never set up a conference call, but I feel like that's relatively easy to do in the case that we cannot live stream by Wednesday, which I think is a good possibility, to have one of those devices in the middle, and we can post, you know, the city's website, and on our, you know, respective Facebook pages, or whatever, post the call in number and the ID that people can call in.
In advance.
We don't have to have the public comment section, but that seems relatively easy to do, I just would feel comfortable if we had a backup plan in place, in case that the live stream is not able to work by Wednesday.
I know they have huge ones, like, uh, Apple will have, like stock holders, um, conference call, I'll call it, they can't hear me, they don't listen to Joe Burns, but there's thousands of people around the world listening in on that conference call.
Yeah, absolutely.
With them speaking, and they're talking about, so, yeah, so we could, it is possible for all, for us seven, or however, need to be on it, and then eighty-six, the public from, they can listen, but they can't speak.
Right, and I think we have, at least I know in the county executive's office, they have, do we have those, they're, they're like little mouse? Right, yeah, I think we have those, I mean, what do we have to do to set that up?
You have to have a special line, because, um, they don't.
They have one here, or we have?
That's a problem.
Yeah, don't we have that ability to do that?
I think there's one somewhere. The phone itself, you have to have a special line to have a conference, I can't just have one.
We just call in, but I, I don't, I don't know if we're set up to do that, I don't know, and without Lori here again, I don't know, we, we're talking.
Right.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so one final thing, though, before we leave, we need to know what we're telling the public about Wednesday.
So I would recommend telling the public that the likelihood of us having a public comment is low, and if they would like to comment, they should email or call me ahead of time.
Okay.
And they can just email clerk@cityadventure.com, and I will communicate whatever they wanna say into the record.
And you're, if you're going to make a statement, or write a letter, or something public facing, that we can then share?
Yes, I can put that on the city's website, just a note about who to contact, how to do it, I can do that, and I'll share that with you guys as well once it's done.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, Lori, I mean, I agree, Lori, I mean, she's probably got seventy million and three things on her plate right now, I mean, this is definitely the easiest next, given like what Councilwoman Resonant said, we've been, you know, it's forty-eight hours until Wednesday, so for the time frame.
Okay, we'll just all put up our own personal Facebooks, um, on the stand, and we'll tell everyone to watch us, okay?
I don't know where everybody is, it might be five people, everybody, I'll take a, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll take that.
Yes, Councilwoman, you can mention three, we will not shut him off.
Really?
Very much.